Good evening and welcome to the Corey Valley Unified Union School Board Meeting. It is September 20th, 2021. If you would all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can they hear us?
Kristi, can you hear us? Can you hear us?
All right, thank you for -- we had a brief intermission as we had some technology issues. We are on approval of agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, a motion would be in order for approval as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mike, second by Kristen. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. General public comment, is there anyone present from the general public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. Old business. So, we are -- I think you've noticed that we did this at the GRCSU and other boards have, it just happened the way our meetings fell since we only meet once a month, that we need to reaffirm the COVID decision, all COVID decisions to the superintendent. And if you recall, when we started this pandemic, we had delegated all decisions and responsibilities to Chris. I'm sure you remember the reason why, and that's because he's receiving all of the information, and rather than having to call a multitude of special meetings, this allows Chris, along with Lisa Matson, to be making the best and most informed decisions for our -- not just for our districts, but for all students and teachers and families, communities involved. So, a motion would be in order to reaffirm all COVID decisions to the superintendent.
I'll move.
Motion by Seth, is there a second?
I'll second that, this is Jessica.
Second by Jessica. Are there any -- is there any discussion or questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Just about the, I believe on Tuesday, last Tuesday, there were updated guidelines for masking indoors, right? Are we gonna look at those again?
We have not received any further guidance on that, so we're waiting.
For, is that even eating in cafeterias to pod and assign seats?
We have not seen anything from the Department of Health.
So they haven't released it?
Right.
Okay. He announced it, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have not received a new memo, and the memos that we receive usually a day or two after are on the AOE COVID-19 website from the Department of Health, so.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there any other old business to come before the board? Okay. New business, we have a person from Proctor that is interested in joining the board, Sarah. So, Sarah, would you like to introduce yourself and just give a brief synopsis of yourself?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Thumbs up if you can hear great. Okay. So my name is Sarah Lones Motulik. I am, I live in Proctor with my husband and two little girls and three cats. Both of my girls are students at Proctor Elementary School in Kent Island and third grade. So, I heard that there were a couple of openings toward the end of the school year last year. I heard that there were a couple of openings for Proctor representatives on the board, and I thought it would be important that Proctor has had full representation, and also the appointment would be an opportunity to learn more about the schools and the school, the work of the school board. My, I also have a professional background in education. My field specifically is digital learning and educational technology, and so I'm currently working in that field and was a professor in that field for about 10 years, so I'm excited to have the opportunity to potentially contribute my expertise to the school board in that area as well where, what are appropriate, so.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Sarah? So, a motion would be in order to appoint Sarah to the Corey Valley Board as a Proctor representative until March of 2022, and then she has the opportunity, if she's still that interested, to run for the rest of the position, and I think there's probably a year left on it, so. But we can only appoint until town meeting. So, is there a motion in order, or a motion to appoint Sarah as a Proctor representative to the Corey Valley Board until the March 2022 town meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion. Kristen, let me know.
I'll second.
Second by Kristen Ross, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So Sarah will welcome to the board, and she'll continue to stay with us this evening, but until she takes the oath from the town clerk, she will not be a voting member until the October meeting.
Thanks, everyone. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Any other new business to come before the board? Moving on to approval of minutes, the August 16th, 2021 minutes in your pocket, are there -- a motion would be in order for approval of the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Nate, second.
I'll second that, Jessica.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Warrants are in your pocket, they come to you electronically through your GRCSU Gmail. Any questions should be directed to Lewis. A motion would be in order to approve the warrants.
Kristen Ross, I'll move. To approve the warrants.
Second.
I'll second that.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report, Chris.
Thanks, Lisa. I have a few items to discuss tonight. Honestly, it started the school year, I did have an opportunity during the first week of school to get around to all the Corey Valley schools, just gotta check in. It was nice to see students and staff back in the building, you know, we look forward to a good year. We know that, as we all are aware of, it's been a kind of a rough start in some of our schools and some of our communities, just dealing with the Delta variant, but I just, you know, wanted to say thank you to the administrators, the staff, and the school nurses, even our families, just for being patient and being understanding. It is going to be a kind of a difficult time for us as we kind of battle and deal through this. I kind of skipped into the next part, that's with the COVID updates. As of today, we have had 14 cases within our Corey Valley school communities, 10 classrooms have had to quarantine, and then in total, we've had 192 individuals have had to quarantine. Now those numbers obviously look high because whenever there is a positive case, particularly in one of our elementary school classrooms, we have to quarantine all of our students. So therefore, like if they say, an individual within our second grade school community tests positive, then therefore that second grade has to go out to quarantine, so it does put a higher number. And I know there's been a lot of frustration from our, you know, families. I spoke with a lot of individuals, I know building administrators spoke with individuals just being frustrated with, you know, the fact that they have to be out for so long, and you know, when can you get back? I do know that there has been some discussion at the state level, ways to provide, you know, there's some pilot programs about testing to see that maybe potentially as an unvaccinated elementary school student goes out quarantined, that there might be an at-home or a school test in the works where they could probably get back a little bit sooner. They would have to wait the full seven days, you know, take a test, if it's negative, they can move into school, if it's positive, they have to return home. So, there are some signals that, you know, out there that we're trying to work through some things because it is a bit of a headache, and I know that some of the board members here have been affected by this, having to had, you know, students that don't quarantine, but it's less than ideal, but you know, we said this from, you know, the get-go, that we have, it's in our communities, we know that, and you know, so if it's gonna be in our communities, it's gonna be our schools. Our schools are a direct reflection of the towns in which they reside, so therefore if we are having an issue, whether it be, you know, the Delta variant this time, that it will work its way into our schools, and you know, we just ask that, you know, people at home are just, you know, making good decisions, and just understand that if, you know, if you are, you know, ill, stay home, please, you know, just to prevent that. I think there have been some questions about mitigation strategies here. We do understand that we're not under a state of emergency, so things shift a little bit, but I work with the building administrators and the staff, that we are doing everything we, you know, we could do under, you know, the current guidance. We also look at the CDC, and I know that we met last week with a lot of admin, even start to look at, you know, the physical distancing when appropriate, you know, that's something which, you know, particularly within classrooms, we are looking at alternate cafeteria settings, things on those lines. We do understand that the single most important mitigation strategy really is just, you know, properly wearing masks within our schools, and I know that, you know, that's of public debate, there are some people who feel that it's not necessary, I'm not here to, you know, debate that tonight, it's just, it's, you know, that's just where we're at. So we just, you know, we'll continue to deal with this as we move forward. If there is a need for us to move to more stringent measures, then we will, but we, like I said, we're under certain regulatory, there's a regulatory framework which we have to operate, that we didn't have to operate in our last year. In our state of emergency, we had a little more flexibility how we handled situations. Last year, you know, in one of our schools, if we had a large number of cases, students out, we could just say, hey, let's, let's put that school in a remote for a day while we figure things out, and you know, can't do that. You know, it's prioritizing personal learning, we have to get our kids, you know, kids back in and do it, you know, as safely as we can. And we do understand, like I said, the word, people have to cross the spectrum. I've heard, follow the science from people all across the spectrum, you know, look at the data from people all across the spectrum, it's just the reality of the world we're living in. So, you know, I think myself and the administrators are seeing the same level of frustration, the anger, the emotions, you know, that's being played out on national news, being played out locally as well, and like I said, I just ask that, you know, as you deal with administrators and deal with teachers, please be patient, understand that, you know, that they are doing the best they can, that they're not willingly doing this, they're not trying to make anyone's life difficult, it's just it's, we are operating as best we can and given the current conditions, so, you know, like I said, but I understand the frustration, but we're kind of where we're at. There has been a bit of a question about under quarantine, what happens, and I think that's something which we did discuss this, where the seven through 12 is a little bit different, we'll talk more about the elementary school because they're, you know, unvaccinated. When a whole class has to go remote, let's just say a third grade class has to go remote, then the classroom teacher will, you know, during, you know, the quarantine, will teach remotely. We have said all along that we are not going back to the hybrid model, and we're not going to, and this is not, I don't want to confuse anybody, that this is not a shift back to the hybrid, this is deal with a quarantine issue. We are no way are going to be moving back to hybrid where it's a blend of in-person and remote at any time during the course of this year, as a SU-wide model, but during that time, like I said, we feel that the teacher will have an opportunity to educate their children during the quarantine. Where it becomes difficult for us is when students can then kind of come back. There is a bit of a rolling timeline. We know that for those that who've had to deal with this, testing is very difficult to come by right now. As you, you know, last spring, I think you could sign up, you know, you go there, place 20 minutes from now, and you'd be in and out, I think now you might be finding a reservation or spot three days from now, so it's becoming very difficult. So, what we're finding is, as kids are coming back after day seven, where if they're tested, test a negative, they can return back to school, some are, you know, by luck of the draw are able to, you know, get a negative test, come back on day seven, day eight, day nine, day 10, and so you have this window between day seven and day 14 where you have this bit of a shift between, you know, you have kids who are fully remote, now you have some in-person, you have some remote. What we decided to do was, you know, our teachers are professionals, I think they do a great job, I think they understand the complexities of the situation, as we looked at the million different hypotheticals that could come out during the situation in terms of grouping, who might be out, who might be in, we decided it was best left to, you know, the teacher's discretion in terms of how best to educate, you know, their classroom during this time. And so I think that's what, you know, we put a lot of, you know, trust in them, we have, you know, given them autonomy, professional responsibility to do what they do best, and that's educate the kids. And so during that time where there's in-person and, you know, a, you know, some kids in-person, some kids are remote, that classroom teacher will set up what learning will look like for the kids who are at home, as well as the kids who are in-person. So that's something where parents will work with that classroom teacher, but there is no pressure one way or another for, you know, in terms of what they can do, but we trust that the teachers, each one of our teachers will design a high-quality learner experience for our kids, and we want to get away from just, you know, sitting there saying, hey, you can just make it up when we get back. I know that some people said, well, just treat it like a normal sick day, or if the kid's out a couple of days, and I think that depends on the experience. I think there are some kids, you know, who, you know, they're out a couple of days in the past, teacher's done a phenomenal job, but the teacher's saying, like, you know what, don't worry about it, we'll, you know, we'll see that. Our goal is, we'll work with the building administrators, is to make sure that all of our teachers, you know, really are, you know, educating our kids in one way or another. And when I say educating, does not always mean face-to-face, in-person instruction, that's not what I'm saying, is the fact that the work that's coming on, whether it be a Google Classroom, project-based learning experience, anything on those lines, that the teacher will have something ready to go for those kids to work on while they're at home, so when they move back to the classroom, there should be a seamless transition as best they can. So it's something we're working with, like I said, our administrators on, working with our classroom teachers, but I know and looking at our teachers, we have a lot of phenomenal teachers in our, in Corey Valley and our SU, I think they'll do a phenomenal job, and I think they, you know, they know, they best know how to educate our kids, and as we look at, you know, differentiation and, you know, so I think that's what we're looking to do. And then when we shift back after, you know, the 14th day, everybody should be back, ready to go for in-person learning, and we thought, you know, like I said, this is the best way to move forward with this. Fingers crossed with, you know, regards to vaccines being available, but we also know that when a vaccine is available, there'll still be some hesitancy on families' parts, and so there has been a question, I received a couple of phone calls today, would we be looking at enforcing a student mandate on vaccines? And no, we're not looking at that at this time, we're just trying to just, we're really get through each day. So I think it's, you know, that'd be something from, maybe from a federal, state level, but right now on a local level, we're not entertaining that because we do understand the, you know, the concerns and where people are at regarding vaccines, so we're trying to be respectful of that, but understand it does shift a little bit. The seven through 12, there was a discussion about how things are handled, but in seven through 12, all students are eligible for a vaccine, so the way it's going to work is just if there is a positive case, then we will still currently go through contact tracing, and they said, you know, the vaccinated individuals will, you know, if they're, you know, don't have any symptoms can stay in, if there are symptoms or they're unvaccinated, they will have to go out. There will not, at this time, it will be just treated as if a kid's at home sick. So if someone has to go home and quarantine, it will be treated like just as if they're out for a flu or just anything else in terms of work, and like I said, that has been shared with, you know, teachers, expectations, you know, in terms of where we're at. We should have heard that there has been a shift from the Department of Health, they moved that, the target for the 80% back from 10 days to October 4th. We do expect there to be a bit of an update, whether or not that, you know, probably ended this week, maybe early next week, if that October 4th deadline will stay, but we, a adestation form was sent out last week for families that are eligible, so it will be something we'll be currently taking a look at, and I know that, you know, the two schools who really are targeted for 80% right now, Proctor High School and Polton High School, I know that some of our schools, West Rutland is a bit of complexity, he's about to work with Jay and Joe on just what that might look like, or whether or not we want to have a more of a school-wide approach as opposed to individual, but that's something, you know, we'll provide more information as we see fit. But there is some discussion or talk about once a, you hit that 8% among eligible student population, that there will be no need to contact trace, that will just, at that point, like say at Polton High School, if we get to the 8%, say in mid-October, and we feel comfortable with that, if there is a positive test, then that's, you will just go home, and then everyone will be able to just stay in school, and if they feel sick, then they'll be sent home as well, we'll start to kind of move, shift towards that. So there's a lot out there, and as we have these developments, we will share what this looks like, but I know that a lot of the, there's frustration on the older end because kids say, hey, I got the vaccine, I did what I needed to do, you know, can we, you know, wear the mask, you know, take the mask off, you know, we're not there yet, so we just ask everyone to be patient, be understanding, we are, we're working through this, but we know that that provides still a lot of, you know, concerns and frustration. A couple of other things, surveillance testing, we are working with the, you know, Chick Health, right now our target date is October 6th, sorry. There are some tech issues on the backend, we're currently working through that, but I know that was mentioned in the newsletter, I just wanted to get that out because there have been a lot of questions asked. We will be, like I said, our goal is to provide weekly surveillance testing on a voluntary basis for students and staff, so fingers crossed that, you know, the next week or so, the tech will all kind of work itself out, and then we'll have information out within the next week, week and a half, about forms and things on those lines, so for those families that would like their students and staff to be tested, that we can have that in place, okay? Just trying to, the rest of it, I do have a listed along list of some of the workshops that GRCSU administrators are engaged in this year, and that's more just for your, you know, review. We have a busy year, so it's, you know, on top of dealing with COVID, doing whatever else, you know, we, there are a lot of things that, as I said, the administrative team really feels like we need to continue, you know, move forward, and just, we have, you know, we have a lot of great things, you know, to work on, get through, so our goal is by the end of this year, we'll be in a much better place. And the last thing I saved is, we have actually two, I know I actually have one in here, but the other one will be mentioned on Wednesday, so I'll save them both. We were notified at the early September that last year we did, you know, every year the GRCSU is able to nominate two UVM Outstanding Teachers of the Year. We were notified that one of our Outstanding Teacher of the Year last year was identified as a semifinalist for the UVM Teacher of the Year Award, and that is Courtney Elliott from Proctor Elementary. I just want to say congratulations to Courtney, I know that they're, according to the process, I think it was maybe September 15th, where she had an interview, and then based upon the interview, they're being invited back, but we should know by the end of September as to who the new UVM Teacher of the Year is. If Courtney doesn't win it, then she should have, I think she's a phenomenal teacher, but that's unbiased, but I just wanted to say congratulations to Courtney, she's done, you know, I think best exemplifies someone who really puts kids first. She'll do whatever it takes to, you know, to get these kids, she doesn't care what anybody says, the pressure is, you know, one way or another, she just puts kids first and does whatever, you know, whatever's best for them. I think that's a model teacher, I think, so we're greatly appreciative of that, and we'd like to see more of that in our, actually, in fact, we do have it, but like to see more. And the second individual is our new UVM Teacher of the Year candidate, the other one was from Rutland Town, but this is Brian Audet from West Rutland. Did I just want to read, Jay, do you have this in your principal's report?
I do.
All right, so I'm not gonna steal Jay's, I'm not gonna steal Jay's thunder, so I'll let Jay read this.
Go ahead and do it, and I didn't actually include that, all that information.
Okay, so I just want to read briefly what Jay had said about Brian, because like I said, I just want to, you know, I think it's worthy of just the note of eye and the attention here. So, Brian has been a middle school teacher at West Rutland for the past 19 years. Brian always facilitates learning in his classroom with a combination of best practices, humor, and real-world experiences. He is active in the West Rutland community, attending just about every athletic, civic, and music event on his own time. Brian builds relationships with his students and colleagues, and is respected by all in the West Rutland school community. We can think of no greater honor to bestow to Brian than the UVM Outstanding Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Brian, I think it's a well-deserved honor, so. And with that, I'll close my report, so on a positive note.
All right. Any questions, comments for Chris? All right, thank you, Chris, and we'll move on to principals' reports, so we will start with Jay.
All right, good evening, everybody. Reversing our order tonight.
Well, since you come to sit with us, Jay, it seems like you should have the honor of going first.
Good evening, everybody. I have included a lot of information in my principal's report, but I think I would be remiss without echoing Superintendent Sal's comments about Brian Audet being our Teacher of the Year, outstanding candidate. We have many, many teachers that would easily rise to that too, but Brian has just done such a good job, we wanted to acknowledge his service to our community. I put in quite a bit of information in here. One of the big things I just want to be very clear with is we have had an uptick in COVID cases at West Rutland School. A number of our elementary classrooms are actually under quarantine right now. I want to thank all of the parents, as Superintendent Sal had already mentioned, for their support, to our teachers and staff who have been helping us. We knew we would get some cases, but we have had a lot, and it really has hit us very hard in the last three days. We went from having none to what we have today, so it is concerning, and I do want to thank the staff and the teachers, or the staff and the parents for doing the right thing. Actually, a lot of our cases have been shortened a little bit in the fact that parents kept their children home when they weren't feeling well, so by the time they got tested, they had been out of school for five or six days already, and that was great, it speeds everything else up. So we appreciate the community's support in keeping children at home when they're sick, and to our staff who are also staying home when they don't feel well. I will say, for Joe and I as two veteran administrators, this has been a very challenging last couple of days, and we're relying on a lot of our experience and a lot of dedicated folks in West Rutland who are helping us do the right thing each and every day there, so big shout-out to them. The rest of my report is pretty self-explanatory, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Jay?
Thank you for the enrollment numbers.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Polton Elementary.
Thank you, Lisa. Hi, everybody. I really feel already there's a common theme in what people are reporting. I know we're all very happy to have the kids back in the classrooms, and believe it or not, even fifth and sixth graders seem to be really happy to be back in school, so that's a very positive thing that we can, you know, continue to focus on as we find ourselves facing difficult times. I would like to thank the team of teachers who are going to be helping me working as we work out logistics, because we are planning on changing our meals, we're planning on going back to the classrooms for lunch, which I think is going to make us all feel a little bit better in regard to our COVID protocols, and I'd just like to thank, again, the parents because we've had to shift years on a short amount of notice, and I just, it's really important to me to have your support, and I know that the teachers are very appreciative of it as well. And finally, I'm really happy that we have our after-school program staffed, so we will be able to offer that for families and students, because I think, you know, it's going to be very helpful, so I'm happy that we'll be able to start that on Monday.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Kristen? All right, we'll move on to Polton High School, Joe.
I'm hearing.
You're muted.
You can hear.
Here you go. No, muted, just extremely quiet.
Unusual, no, sorry.
I was gonna say, Kristen's gonna say something about that.
Do you want to come back to Joe?
Yeah. All right, I'll move on to Kristi, while you figure that out, Joe.
All right, can everybody hear me? Yes, okay, thanks Jen for letting me know that. All right, good evening, everybody. Please do have a copy of my principal's report. Again, I'll echo, I really need to thank my teachers and the community. It's been a crazy start, however, everybody has stepped up, we've been pretty short on substitutes and coverage, and teachers have gone above and beyond anything I could ask, and maybe my [inaudible]. are busy by means for sure. We do have a few events that I would like to bring to the community's attention. We are going to be having some parent virtual nights. We have been working together with this company called Changing Perspectives, and they are going to be offering some virtual parent evenings. It's going to be September 28th, October 21st, and November 16th. From 6:30 to 7:30, families can join via the link that I have sent out. And they can also respond by calling the school if they would like to join. We are going to be putting, everybody who attends all three sessions, their names into a lable for a $100 gift card. So we're hoping that can kind of motivate families to join. Currently, I believe we only have 12 families. However, 12 is better than nine. So there's a, you know, a few more days people can sign up to join. That makes it exciting for sure. We are going to be having our virtual open house this Wednesday. This will be from 6:00 to 6:45. Parents have been provided with Google links, so they can join their classroom, listen to the teachers, talk about curriculum, ask questions, just as if they were in person. We are working this year on doing a farm-to-school program with a local farmer. We're still working out the details, and right now I have six classrooms that are interested. We have been meeting with the farmer to perfect the lesson and how they align with the Common Core standards, the Science Standards, and also the Health and Nutrition Guidelines. So that's super exciting. I would like to echo Mr. Sal in recognizing Courtney Elliott. She is an exemplary teacher and colleague. I've had the ability to work with her for a number of years and I'm absolutely impressed every year. Her willingness to go above and beyond and try new things is pretty exciting. I believe. Oh, one thing I wanted to ask in terms of field trips, we need to have our sixth graders that go on the law school every year. And I didn't know if the board would like the teachers to attend to present the logistics of the field trip, or if you would like me to provide a written report. I know in the past, sometimes we've had the teachers come. So I would just like the board's take on what they would like for the next week.
I think you could probably just provide the agenda for us. I mean, the field trip's not until May unless something's changed?
Sure. I can do that.
Okay. And that'll give the board an opportunity. Yeah. And with that, I mean, high school principals should be thinking about and bringing senior trip proposals also, particularly if those proposals incorporate traveling across state lines. So we should be looking at those within the next month or so. Not that it's definitive what they're doing, but just so we have an idea with that. I think actually the policy says September maybe, or November. I can't remember.
I think it's November.
Yeah.
Okay. So just be thinking about that. All right. Any questions for Kristy? All right. Thank you. Jen?
Hi, everyone. I believe you all have my report. I feel like we've been able to get in a lot of things. In a few short weeks, we were able to, with the numbers of COVID starting to go crazy in the area, we were able to have an open house, a senior class meeting, where we went over events that we see at class for the year. We, a couple of soccer games that we've been participating in. And this weekend, we have a fall festival community-based event in which all of our classes have little booths in order to raise money from Raiser Wise. So if you're able to come, come on down. One of the things I did want to point out is on October 13th, when our sophomores and juniors are going to be taking the PSAT, we're going to be having our seniors engage in career and college planning. We have, we're at Cassipleton University, and our career clients are coming, so they can do things like the Common App, build resumes, reference letters, things like that. And during that time, our seventh or ninth graders will be out in the community doing community service. And so I've had community members reach out to me, if anyone else is out there that wants, you know, their lawn raked or anything like that in the faculty community, please do reach out so that we can have a variety of events for our students that day. Any questions?
No. Great. Thank you. Joe?
All right. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
All right. Well, in addition to my board report, I do want to point out, we've, again, following the theme here, we were very happy to have our seventh grade orientation again this year. It was very well attended. I think we had over 90% of our families come in, which we have over, almost, I think, 40 families in there. So that was a great number to come in. And, you know, every kid looked a little swag and they got a tour from some of our upperclassmen were there, give them a tour. You know, and the mask thing was great. No one really, didn't have any issues with people wearing the mask inside. So that was, that was a good start to the year. And I know Christina Kerber's on here, but I want to shout out to her and Don Starley and Rod Adams, our four seventh grade teachers for the semester. They really did a great job the first three days of school and did a quick little, like a orientation thing with the kids, like a lot of team building things and stuff like that. It was just, I think the seventh, I had a lot of comments from parents that first weekend at the home football game about, you know, how their kids were really enjoying it and it was a great start to the new year for them. I know, we had discussed last year about the restrictions and how that affected some of our seventh graders coming into the building. So shout out to them for what they did for those seventh graders, you know, start the new year off on a good one. And then, you know, again, great to have kids back in the building. It's a full move tonight. So, you know, shout out to Tina too. I was out, I think I was down at the Waddington Conference, which is a great, great thing that the VPA allows us to do. But she was a little busy last week and boy, it was a long day today. You know, you know, and even had some issues at Stafford and talking with Melissa Connors at Stafford, just saying, you know, it's kind of a full move. Kids are getting used to being back at school again. So, in one sense, it's kind of nice to get back into that role, but the other sense, they can do something different to get back to normalcy.
All right. Any questions for Joe? All right. Thank you. Before we leave the principals' area, I just want to thank all building administrators for your diligence with homecoming events. I know it's so much easier to say yes when students come and ask for things, but knowing where we are right now, the decisions that you're making are certainly important, not just to our educational community, but our community as a whole. And also for staying true to the board's request and adhering about fundraising, I think that's just another component that kind of goes along with being respectful to the community and the education community and keeping everyone safe. I want to say, we talk a lot about sports here, and this is actually a Quarry Valley team that we have that maybe doesn't get nearly as much credit as should, but I want to say congratulations, the Quarry Valley bass fishing team won first place at the VPA Open Classic. We have two members on that team, Hunter Scazza from West Rutland and Jacob Patch from Proctor. So we talk a lot about soccer, football, basketball. We don't always talk about this. This is one of two Quarry Valley teams I think we have. We also have Unified Sports. So it's nice to recognize. And the pictures were amazing. I don't know if you happened to see them, but the pictures that one of the mothers posted were pretty spectacular, the size of fish that they caught. So I just wanted to give them a little shout out. So thank you all very much. Moving on to personnel, we have a list of contracts before you. Four listed under professional staff will go by headings Jenna Abatell, Hannah Corkum, Alexandra Kennedy, and Brittany Pleno. Are there any questions about those recommendations? Three of them are horizontal moves and the last is a long-term subposition. Hearing none, I'll move on. For support staff, we have Sean Gibbons, Arlen Bloodworth, and Beverly Radiker. Two are on-call positions and the last is a part-time receptionist at Proctor High School. The last category is extracurricular. We have Danielle Fagan, Lori Serani, Dave Parker, Michaela Taylor, Matthew, and I'm just going to say.
Alnick.
Alnick, okay. Mallory McGinnis, Rebecca Sanderson, Emily McLaren, Jamie Malazo, Brad Coop, Brian DeBonis, Kimberly Metcalf, and Drew Kuchar. Are there any questions on any of those extracurricular assignments?
What does a van driver do?
That would be.
So she drives, it's for football season, and she drives several West Rutland students to Poltoni each day after school to Poltoni, drops them off, and comes back. Parents are responsible to pick the children up afterwards. So it's about an hour duty.
So it's like an additional five hours a day, or five hours a week, I mean? Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to accept the contract recommendations as read.
Kristen Ross, I'll move to accept them as read.
Is there a second? Second by Seth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Finance. Louis will not be joining us this evening. If there is something within the packet that you have a question on, I'm going to say the best avenue is to email him tomorrow for clarification. The last page for Louis is just merely housekeeping. If you recall, last year, we made a motion to move Quarry Valley Trust and Scholarship Account into the general, so we didn't have to borrow as much. And he's just giving you an update. That was part of the motion that he would provide a report to the board. All right. Committee reports. Communication Committee, Kristen Ross.
So we did not meet this past week. We postponed our meeting for a variety of reasons. So I don't have an update unless Greg has an update about the survey. The survey hasn't been out too long, so we don't have too much on that yet. So I think hopefully by our next meeting, we'll have a little more on that. And I don't know if Greg or anybody else, I guess Greg would be the best person to address that. I don't know if he has anything to add.
There's been 72 responses out of the towns so far. So maybe we, we need to keep, maybe sending it out several times or leave it hanging or make it more prominent on the websites, maybe put it on the top in the banner. I don't know. There's a couple of things I can, I can brainstorm with Shannon about it tomorrow, but 72 responses are, it's not great as far as our population is concerned. So maybe we should give it a little bit more time.
Okay.
Yeah. I think so. And I think, yeah, if you and Shannon have some ideas of how we can promote that, again, if there's virtual open houses, we had talked about that, you know, having people be aware of it when they log in or join a meeting for a virtual open house, I think that would be helpful. You know, having multiple messages from principals or other staff would also be helpful. You know, maybe in the next week or so, kind of, a lot of us have been distracted by having kids not being in school in the last week. So have other things on our mind probably and in our email boxes, inboxes, but maybe another sort of, you know, put it out there one more time that we're trying to, or a couple more times would be, you know, this week and next week. I feel like by the end of October, if we've had it out there a while and some of the open houses are able to capture a few more people or promote it during that time, that would also be helpful. So.
Okay. That sounds good.
One thing to add, it's funny, out of the, out of those 72 respondents, 67 said that they preferred emails from the school and/or the school teacher as their preferred method of communication rather than the website. I mean, we let them check multiple boxes. So some did choose social media and the website. But the wide majority liked getting those meekly emails, like getting things sent to them. So maybe I can, you know, meet with the front offices and we can do another email mailing to the parent groups and, you know, just nag it a little bit. I mean, no one likes spam emails, but if the, what we got responded back is correct, then they like those direct communications. So maybe we could do that again.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I, you know, from personal experience, an email from a teacher is much more going to draw my attention because, you know, it's usually going to be having to do with my specific student, you know. Now, if you're a community member who is not, you know, wouldn't normally receive an email from a teacher, those are the people I think we're going to have the most difficulty getting to respond at all. And so we need to push this out there in other ways that don't involve, you know, people with students in, in the classroom. So, you know, we maybe need to think about that a little more too. So.
Okay. All right. Well, these people are responding. Great.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Policy Committee. So we have some policies before us this evening. The first one is H2, Community Use of School Facilities. This is the first read. Were there any changes, deletions, portions of concern that this board would like to make to this particular policy? My question was, it doesn't, I don't see, maybe I've overlooked it, reference the form to fill out. So like a facility use form?
Yeah, I can share that in the policy committee discussion, we kind of went back and forth about the policy versus the form and where that fits in together. And we still haven't really, I don't know that we unified a form because the forms are.
We had actually agreed to, Wells Springs, Rutland Town, Quarry Valley will have their own forms pertaining to their district, but we had the same policy, but procedural aspects will be more local.
Local based. Okay. But in here, it talks about setting a fee schedule. So I think it's odd that it discusses that, but it doesn't reference that a form would be required for use of the facility. To me, the fee schedule would also be a part of the procedure, right? Because that could be, is the fee schedule going to be GRCU-based or is the fee schedule going to be district-based as well?
District-based as well.
Okay. I guess I would like to see that in the policy.
Say the mention that, that a form is, is.
Yeah.
Or the, or the.
That a form is required to fill out, that it, you know, I understand that it's procedural.
Mm-hmm. But just mentioning it in there.
Well, it, I mean, the fact that you listen, listen to a fee schedule but not the form, it seems like you're already adjusting part of the procedure, but not all of it. So.
Yeah. So maybe we can, and the last paragraph, or is this the last?
Yeah.
Or I guess you lose the entire last paragraph and just say that districts, each district will have their own set of procedures, which seems a little complicated, but.
Well, I think in that, in that second, I think it's technically the second to last paragraph, there's a lot of little footnotes here. But on the third page, the last paragraph last paragraph, there's a lot of little footnotes here, but, um, the third page, the last paragraph on the third page of the printed copy, um, it, maybe we can add in there that shall set a fee schedule and then somewhere in there mention, um, each district can, or each, um, requestee or whatever, uh, can, um, you know, should see the building or facilities use form for each district or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just like it to say that you have to fill out a facility use form for the, whether it's the building or the field, and that insurance is required also. So those are important components because I think, most people think that they can just ask to use the building and that that's it. So like, I want to have a birthday party in the gymnasium because it's December and, I mean, I, I'm hopeful that we're requiring insurance for everyone.
Yeah, it does say all users may be required, but maybe we need to say shall be required to demonstrate adequate insurance coverage and shall agree to hold the district harmless, et cetera, so.
I mean, I would think the only time insurance wasn't required is if it would be, uh, like, say, sports boosters or something like that. I mean, I know, like, if Girl Scouts are meeting in your building, they provide you a certificate of insurance. So, I mean, from a liability...
Yeah.
I, I would hope that we're requiring that, so...
Yeah, definitely on, on the form. It's just, I guess we were discussing, if I'm remembering correctly, the, how to put that specif, or if we should put that specificity in this policy, but I think if we mention that we have, that there is a form to fill out and then that users shall be required to demonstrate or submit a certificate of ins, proof of insurance...
Yeah.
That will cover that, I think.
Does the superintendent still approve those? Do they get, or the local?
Yeah, they've been bringing them to, you know, sharing them with me, so, you know. If there's ever a contentious one, like I said, I'll bring that before the board. If it, you know, might be more of a community-based, so I think the majority of the ones that we've had have just been around, uh, you know, summer reuse and summer programming, things all those long, so it's just pretty common, so.
Okay, okay, so we'll adjust that last, second to last paragraph on page, the third printed page.
Any other comments from board members about the policy, changes, concerns? All right, uh, the second policy we have as a first read is F12, which is weapons and firearms. Any comments on this policy, concerns, changes, updates? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to the flag statement. So I want to clarify that this is not a policy, this is not a first read, this is a statement. Other, that other boards across the GRCSU have adopted, this came out of the Policy Committee because there is, um, a lot of conversation around this topic. So questions, comments, concerns, changes, updates for this statement?
Do you want to read the statement first?
Sure, I can read the statement. Flags displayed on any facilities overseen by the Quarry Valley Unified Union School District will include the United States flag and the Vermont State flag at the time of approval of this statement. Facilities within the Quarry Valley Unified Union School District will keep with state and federal guidelines for flag display on public facilities with proper adequate etiquette during school hours and after-school hours, weather permitting. When ordered by the President of the United States or Governor to commemorate a tragic event or death, the flag shall be flown at half-mast. The superintendent's timely approval is required to fly the flag at half-mast at any other time. Future requests to fly other types of flags will be considered when an adopted flag policy is in place.
I'd like to move that the future, for the word starting with future in place, that line be struck.
Okay.
The lessons.
Yes. So Mike would like to strike the last sentence in that statement. A motion would be in order to approve the statement with that change, striking the last sentence.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion pa...
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. So motion passes by majority. Great, thank you. Um, our next meeting is October 18th. It will of course be here as well as being able to join virtually. Uh, future agenda items should be, um, sent to either Chris or his assistant within a timely fashion, so if the meeting is October 18th, all suggested, um, agenda topics should be sent by October 15th, um, to be placed on the agenda. Is there anything else to come before the board? Hearing none, we do have, um, an executive session on, on the agenda for the board, so a motion would be in order to move into executive session for the Margiellis Healy Report, Presentation of Findings and Recommendations for Security and Emergency Response Majors for, this is privileged and confidential information.
Point of order, Chair?
Yes.
Can we have a 10-minute recess to allow PEG TV to, uh, collect themselves?
Sure, yeah. I mean, we'll move, we'll say 7:24.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, um, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, we'll move in at 7:24 so everyone can grab a drink, and the only people moving into executive session are the board. Thank you.